We'll go ahead and get started here for our meeting tonight. We'll first do a roll call vote of council members present. So please unmute your microphones and indicate by voice that you are present when I call your name. Councilmember Deckard. Mr. Deckard won't be able to join us tonight. Councilmember Hawke. Councilmember Iverson.
Here.
Councilmember McKim.
Here.
Councilmember Munson.
Here.
Councilmember Wiltz.
Here.
All right. So we have five of the seven here present. We've got a quorum and we'll move forward with our agenda. Really, the the main event for tonight is going to be first reading of the 2021 budget for the Monroe Fire Protection District, first reading for the 2021 budget for the Monroe County Solid Waste Management District, and then first reading for the Monroe County Budget for 2021. But first, we'll begin with some business items that were tabled from or continued from the previous meeting, including some adjustments to the hourly part-time pay. Ms. Wiltz?
Counsel, I move to approve the records request to approve, I think I mean to say the recorder's request, to approve ordinance 2020-48 Recorder's Perpetuation Fund. Is that one that we're prepared to do now?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, and for the record, Councilmember Hawke has joined us. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on this. Is there any discussion on the request? And again, this was tabled from the previous meeting. So we're just wrapping that up. It was a late request that got to us. No questions? Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, very good. We'll move on now to item number three.
Counsel, I move to approve the requested 2021 Monroe County Budget Increases for the following departments: Aviation Department, Building Commission, Clerk's Office, Courts Department, Extension Office, Health Office, Probation Department, Public Defender, and Sheriff's Office, for a total increase of $107,911 in the amounts as set out in the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Michelle, did you have any additional information that needed to be added for this?
No, this is from the departments that needed an increase due to the part-time hourly rate being, the base being adjusted to $14 an hour. And also, it also includes the Sheriff's Department Crossing Guard. They are having trouble, difficulty with hiring and retaining a person at for $6,000. So they are requesting an increase to hopefully be able to get some good applicants or recruitment.
Very good. Thank you for the information. Are there any questions from council members? Any discussion? Okay. Any public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, so that will conclude all the regular business items that we had on the agenda tonight. Now we'll move on to the first reading for the 2021 budgets for the Monroe Fire Protection District, the Monroe County Solid Waste Management District, and for Monroe County. We will get started here with the Fire Protection District.
Counsel, this is the first reading of ordinance 2020-43 Monroe Fire Protection District. Be it ordained or resolved by the Monroe County Council that for the expenses of the Monroe Fire Protection District for the year ending December 31, 2021, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered, set apart out of the several funds herein named, and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year, unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Monroe Fire Protection District, the property tax levies and property tax rates, as herein specified, are included herein. Budget Form 4B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance and resolution should, shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Monroe County Council. The amounts referred to then are: Total adopted budget of $11,921,519; adopted tax levy total $9,380,318; and adopted tax rate of 0.3955.
Point of order, are you going to read the individual funds? That's always the way we've done it in the past.
I can. So I will continue. Fund, in Fund 8603 Special Fire General, the adopted budget is $10,878,973; adopted tax levy $8,590,521; adopted tax rate of 0.3622. In Fund 8691 Special Cume Fire, $1,042,546 is the adopted budget, with a tax levy of $789,797; and adopted tax rate of 0.0333, for the totals as read previously.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions from council members? Any discussion on this? Okay. Yes, Ms. Munson?
I want to discuss only to note that we had extensive comment and discussion on this budget before and during our budget workshop. And I can't believe anybody doesn't have full information already. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Any public comment on the first reading for the Monroe Fire Protection District? Okay. And there is no vote on this this evening. That will take place tomorrow night. All right, well, if there's nothing further, I think we can move on to our next item.
Counsel, this is the first reading of ordinance 2020-44 Monroe County Management District. Be it ordained and resolved by the Monroe County Council, making sure I'm reading the right one, that for the expenses of the Monroe County Solid Waste Management District for the year ending December 31, 2021, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered, set apart, out of the several funds herein named, and for the purposes herein specified, subject to laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year, unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of the Monroe County Solid Waste Management District, the property tax levies and property tax rates, as herein specified, are included herein. Budget Form B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance and resolution shall be in full force and effect from, effect from and after its passage and approval by the Monroe County Council. In Fund 1215 Non-Reverting Capital Projects, the adopted budget is $45,414; adopted tax levy $45,014; adopted tax rate 0.0007. Fund 8210 Special Solid Waste Management, adopted tax levy $1,912,377; adopted tax rate 0.0304. Fund 8283 Solid Waste District Debt Service, adopted tax levy $330,000; and adopted tax rate 0.0053, for totals of an adopted budget of $3,078,573; and adopted tax levy of $2,287,791; and adopted tax rate of 0.0364.
Second.
Right. Are there any questions or comments on the Solid Waste Management District budget for 2021? All right. Is there any public comment on the first reading? Okay. No public comment either. I think we will move on to the next item.
Counsel, this is the first reading of ordinance 2020-45 Monroe County. Be it ordained by the Monroe County Council that for the expenses of Monroe County for the year ending December 31, 2021, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered, set apart, out of the several funds herein named, and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year, unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by the law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Monroe County, the property tax levies and property tax rates, as herein specified, are included herein. Budget Form 4B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance slash resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval by the Monroe County Council. Do I need to read all of these?
No, yeah. This is the fun part.
Yes, you have to read each one.
Read it as a speed reading exercise.
Yeah.
That's the way I do it.
I'm not fast, but I will try. Fund 0101 General, $37,201,143 is the adopted budget. The tax levy $20,244,717; adopted tax rate 0.2568. 0102 Fund Election/Registration, budget $409,782; tax levy $558,215; tax rate 0.0007. Fund 0124 2015 Reassessment, adopted budget $778,738; adopted tax levy $740,239; adopted tax rate 0.0094. Fund 0180 Debt Service, $3,200,000; adopted levy $3,200,000; adopted tax rate 0.0406. Fund 0183 Bond Number 3, budget $0, tax levy 0, adopted rate 0. Fund 0184 Bond Number 4, 0, and 0. Fund 0254 Local Income Tax, budget $2,972,897; tax levy $0, adopted tax rate 0. 0616 Convention and Visitors Bureau Fund, budget $2,031,964; adopted tax levy 0 and rate 0. Fund 0702 Highway, $5,407,733; tax levy 0, tax rate 0. 0703 Highway Special, 0, 0, and 0. Fund 0706 Local Road and Street, $2,970,000 budget, tax levy and tax rate 0 and 0. Fund 0790 Cumulative Bridge, $575,424 is the budget, with a tax levy of $1,679,140; and a tax rate of 0.0213. Fund 0792 County Major Bridge, $2,520,487 for the budget, $2,625,134 levy, and the rate is 0.0333. 0801 Health, budget of $1,497,173; tax levy is $505,883, and the rate is 0.0064. Fund 1310 Park Non-Reverting Capital, $65,000; budget $0 and levy and 0% tax rate. 2102 Aviation Airport Fund, $1,142,662 is the budget. The levy is $776,492; and the tax rate is 0.0098. Fund 2391 Cumulative Capital Development Fund, $2,625,134 would be the tax levy, and the rate is 0.0333. And the totals then for those funds are $64,435,694 as the budget. The levy total is $32,454,954; and total rate is 0.4116.
And then we'll do all the Home Rule Funds as well.
Yay! Fund 9500 Extradition and Sheriff's Assistance, $1,219; Fund 9501 Surveyors' Corner Perpetuation, $102,240; Fund 9502 Juvenile Per diem, $300,000; Fund 9503 Monroe County 911 Fund, $1,365,000; Fund 9504 Monroe County Convention Center Debt Fund, $636,000; Fund 9505 Auditors' Ineligible Deductions, $165,619; Fund 9508 User Fee Jury Pay, $24,500; Fund 9509 User Fees, Juvenile Probation, $18,883; Fund 9510 User Fees, Adult Probation, $288,600; Fund 9511 User Fees, Project Income/Job, $422,643; Fund 9512 Supplemental PD Services, Fund 9513 Clerk's Record Perpetuation, $116,114; Fund 9514 User Fees, Diversion Prosecution, I think, um, $155,434; Fund 9515 User Fees, Court Alcohol Drug, $170,018; Fund 9516 Local Health Maintenance, $177,722; Fund 9517 Emergency Planning, Right to Know, $15,900; Fund 9519 Misdemeanor Counting Corrections, $14,800. Fund 521 Alternative Dispute Resolution Fund, $21,000; Fund 9522 Sales Disclosure, County Share, $32,605; Fund 9523 Convention Visitor Capital Improvement and Maintenance, $100,000; Fund 9524 County Offender Transportation, $3,000; Fund 9525 Local Health Department Trust Account, $61,259; Fund 9526 User Fees, Problem Solving Courts, $49,507; Fund 9527 Westside Economic Development, Richland Township TIF, $1,800,000; Fund 9528 46 Corridor Economic Development, Bloomington Township TIF, Fund 9529 Fullerton Pike Economic Development TIF, $183,433; Fund 9530 Platt Book, $130,185; Fund 9531 Convention Center Operating, $574,688; Fund 9532 User Fees, Cable Franchise, $373,501; Fund 9535 PSAP Interlocal, $2,247,490; Fund 9544 Identification Security Protection, $10,500; Fund 9552 Stormwater Management, $1,145,630; Fund 9559 County Elected Officials Training, $30,000; Fund 9571 Public Safety Lit, $3,160,520; Fund 9588 Federal Award Title 4D, $49,910, for a total of $15,296,452.
Second.
I was gonna say, there's another page there, Councilmember Wiltz. So I'm just kidding.
No!
I'm kidding. I'm kidding. I think you get an A+ and a 10 out of 10 for reading that Whitney of budgets and funds and levies and so forth. So any questions or comments from council on first reading of the Monroe County Budget? See, Councilmember Hawke, with her hand raised?
Yes, when will we be receiving the 4Bs? Or did we receive that and it's lost in all my email?
We'll check with Michelle.
Um, I know that Auditor Smith was working on those. You might have to, I think she's on the call. If TSD could let her in, please. Thank you.
There she is.
Welcome, Auditor Smith.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so the the 4Bs are complete on Gateway. We just haven't sent them to the DLGF. Of course, you guys can change the budget tonight, which you already did, and you can change the budget again tomorrow night. So obviously, I can't turn those in to the DLGF until you're finished deciding what you guys want to do.
I just wondered when we were going to see them.
Well, you can see them in real time. They're on the, they're on Gateway. Once you, once you get this approved tomorrow, I guess we could, you know, after, if you don't make any more changes, except for what you made tonight, you know, you could either look it up, or we could just email it to you, print it out and email them to you. Or we can pull them up right now. If you, if TSD can look at, look at, you know, the, the website.
Well, Councilmember Hawke, did you have a preference? Would, would you like these? Maybe we could just get the most updated copy sent out tomorrow morning, and we can have that for the meeting tomorrow?
Right. I, I think it's something that we all have an interest in, that we've been looking at projections on what those 4Bs were going to look like, not just on county general, but all of them in general. So, uh, thank you.
Well, they're definitely on the DLGF website right now.
Mr. McKim?
So have any of the numbers, other than the budget that we just adjusted, been changed since we last, last discussed?
No. Now, we did, or Kim and Bree did preload these, these increases that you saw tonight on the, the, for part-time, on, on the, you know, the budget totals. However, we decreased from where we advertised high down to where you originally voted for, and then increased by these part-time amounts.
Okay, so that number that was on the, on general for budget that was read by Counselor Wiltz does already include the, the part-time increase?
Yes.
Okay, great. And it does, but it does not, uh, let's see, what was that number that was?
The levy amount?
Thirty, thirty, no, the, the budget.
Thirty-seven million, two hundred, one thousand, one hundred, forty-three?
Okay, yes. Thank you. And so, and so we had at 37,136,360 before, but I know you advertised quite high. So, okay, so this is, this essentially, yeah, this essentially reduces everything to exactly what we've just approved tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions or comments from members of council? Okay, well, again, we'll hear this one like the others tomorrow night for final approval. Is, are there any comments from the public on the 2021 county budget first readings? Okay, well, it appears that there are none. So we'll revisit this tomorrow. And we'll now move on to item five, which is the 2021 Salary Ordinance.
You gotta do that.
Sorry. Was there something, something we needed, Auditor Smith? It doesn't appear so. Okay.
Okay, so no vote, and we're ready to move on. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you, sorry, um, so, before I, um, before I read this, what I would like to do is, um, ask the, ask the permission from my colleagues to combine the two ordinances and read the, read both, we'll have both ordinances put up on the screen, um, and since they're exa- the same, except for a few provisions, um, and they're nearly identical, um, I have language produced by, um, Margie Rice that, um, introduces both ordinances at once for adoption, and as long as we're clear that we're voting on two things, um, and we can call them out for two separate votes, but the reading would be a combined reading, is that okay with you? Or would you prefer me reading them separately?
Okay, uh, Councilmember Hawk, did you have something?
Just, I just, you know, we have to get it right, and if, if they're two separate ordinances, I would think you should read them separately, but that's.
I, I can't say that the unique language that is different in the elected officials' ordinance, and that is different in the employees' ordinance, have all been pulled into the language that she's going to read. So the, the ordinances are, um, pretty much the same, except for some unique language for employees and some unique language for elected officials. That has been combined into one document for, uh, Councilmember Wiltz to read.
I think we should do them separately.
It's totally fine.
We decide, let's say if between now and tomorrow, we think their wording's on there needs to be separated on one and not the other, then we don't have to split it off that way, so.
That's totally fine, if that's your preference, you can have her read them both separately.
Sorry, Kate.
No worries, I just need to look it over for a second here.
Was the combining of ordinances for a, a time-saving?
But we're not, we're going to read them separately.
Right, right, uh, was that the, was that the purpose, though?
Yeah, and, and, you know, the law is clear that, you know, I mean, the councils, boards and commissions act through their minutes. So, um, the minutes need to reflect that you know what you're voting on, that you've received the material, and that you've read it, and then those ordinances then are, are, uh, acknowledged and voted upon and, and read. Obviously, notice is legally required to be given, which has been given, so we thought that for purposes of, um, buying some time and saving Kate from having to read the exact language twice, um, we put it into one document for her to read it as, you know, putting, um, out on the floor both ordinances for approval at once. But if that's not how the council, if you guys prefer to read them separately, that's totally fine as well.
I would prefer to read them together, I think if, uh, county legal's opinion is that there's no substantive difference, I think, uh, this council, uh, based on its minutes, can walk and chew gum, we can do it both at the same time.
Right.
Too much, too much faith in the council, huh?
Well, my, my inclination was, since one member had objected to the original suggestion that, you know, we should, uh, read them separately, but we've got another mem- we've got two members now who would like to, um, combine them, so I think we should probably take a vote on this.
Go ahead and combine them, I, whatever.
Okay.
Let me just say for, can I, um, just for, um, the most conservative option, if you want to take the most conservative option, is, uh, Councilmember Hawk's option. There can be absolutely no doubt about it in the future, if anyone were to, let's say, question it or call the D L G F or the State Board of Accounts, um, the absolute most conservative thing to do would be to read them both. And so how about you guys read them both, I can prepare a memo for you all on this issue, and we can decide at the next budget hearing if you want to do it a little differently.
Okay.
Okay, I will, uh, read them separately then, and, um, try to, to get this straight, um, so, for ordinance twenty-twenty dash forty-six A, Monroe County, uh, Government, twenty-twenty-one Salary Ordinance. Um, and this would be the twenty-twenty-one Elected Official Salary Ordinance. An ordinance adopting Monroe County, Indiana, Salary Schedule and Compensation Policies, Ordinance twenty-twenty dash forty-six A. Let me say first, I am, uh, moving that we adopt this ordinance, so that when I finish. Whereas the Indiana Legislature adopted Indiana Code thirty-six dash two dash three at SAG, which established the Monroe County Council as the governing fiscal, fiscal body of Monroe County. And whereas Indiana Code thirty-six dash two dash three dash, uh, dash five dash three grants the Monroe County Council the power to, one, fix the number of officers, deputies and employees, two, describe and classify positions and services, three, adopt schedules of compensation, and four, hire or contract, contract with persons to assist in the development of schedules of compensation. Whereas the Monroe County Council wishes to establish the compensation schedules and pay policies, now be it ordained, by the Monroe County Council of Indiana, that this ordinance affects the number of, uh, number of and compensation for elected officials of the county from the period of January one, twenty-twenty-one, to December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-one, whose salary is comprised of funds payable from any county fund or budget as provided by Indiana Code thirty-six, thirty-six dash two dash five at SAG, are hereby solidly fixed, and the following maximum level of salary is shown on the salary compensation grids. All payments made pursuant to this ordinance are contingent upon the strict compliance with and adherence to the Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook. For elected officials, time is worked on or after January, time worked on or after January first, twenty-twenty-one, and poured to midnight of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, shall be calculated and paid within the parameters of this Salary Ordinance and Personnel Policy Handbook, regardless of when the payment is issued. Elected officials shall not receive compensation above the salary range authorized for their position in the Elected Official Salary Compensation Grid. The county auditor shall not issue pay warrants for pay that exceeds the authorized amount specified in the Salary Ordinance. The compensation amounts listed are an annual appropriation amount. calculation of the bi-weekly rate may result in a slight variation and will not be adjusted at year end.
Second. Oh, wow, actually, there's two, usually we do that presented to the county council, blah, blah, blah.
Yes, there's such a such name.
Yeah, the next page.
Presented to the County Council of Monroe County, Indiana, by induction in full, for the first time this nineteenth day of October, twenty-twenty.
Second.
There you go.
All right, any, uh, any questions or discussion from council members? Yes, Councilmember Hawk?
Yes, as a reminder, uh, we were, we were reminded by the state that we had to pay elected officials at, the salaries could not be anymore within the certain year. Uh, if you remember, a few years ago, we tried to start the salaries for, make the pay go back to like two or three weeks before the end of the year with the new salary range, and yet all real messed up. I didn't think that was ever going to fly, but State Board of Accounts, it didn't, uh, because elected officials are not allowed to be paid anymore than a certain amount within the given time. And I, I think it's important that we read that part separately, because it is different from the other, um, employees. That's number one. Number two, I do continue to have questions about, uh, the personnel policy, how much, uh, authority we have on that personnel policy, because the way it is, we are signing off that we're going to agree to whatever that personnel policy says. Uh, and I, I, I'm not sure that we have equal input into what it says, so.
We don't.
Those are questions that I have, I, I'm, and I'm seeing you disagree with me, Mr. Councilmember McKim, is that?
Oh, no, no, I'm agreeing with you, I don't feel, we, we don't, we are not signatories of the personnel policy. That's the commissioners and the prosecutor and the board of judges, I, no, I, I agree with you.
And I think that, that certainly should come off of there, uh, as elected officials, we should not be told by another group of elected officials what they expect us to do. I mean, we are guided by what the state tells us what to do, and that we must do. But to set us up in a situation where, uh, it doesn't really matter who the commissioners are at this time, or who the council is, it's like setting us up for what, the way it really should be, because we are all duly elected, uh, have statutory duties, and, uh, one elected official cannot require of another elected official anything anymore than what their required statutory duties are. For instance, we can't say you have to be here at eight o'clock every day and work every day until four, we're not allowed to say that.
Yes, Ms. McKim?
Well, Ms. Rice, what, what would be the, um, the impact if we were to, uh, strike that clause from the, um, elected officials version, the forty-six A?
Um, well, well, my question is, is why this is coming up this year? Because this is language that is bending your salary ordinance for decades, and it's been recommended by Wagner, Irwin and Shealy that, um, that the council, the recommendation is you put in your salary ordinance, language that says all payments made pursuant to the salary ordinance are contingent upon full compliance with the personnel policy. Um, the State.
Whether or not we ever agreed to it in the past, if we are questioning it now, we are the ones that sign off on it. It's no one else signs off on that salary ordinance but the county council.
Sure, absolutely.
It should never should not be asked the question, well, why do you care?
Well, I, I.
Years ago, when they wanted to start paying, uh, elected officials, uh, like, a couple of weeks ahead of the salary ordinance, and I said at the time, we can't, we're not supposed to do it that way, and the question came back to me, well, why do you care?
Well, I apologize if that.
Can we just, hold on just a second, everybody, please, I, Ms. Rice was in the middle of making a point that I think was, uh, we, we were all wanting to hear, and then when Ms. Rice finishes her statement, we'll, we'll go back to Ms. Hawk for her comments or, or questions, and then I saw Mr. McKim's hand, so please, just let one person speak at a time, that's easier for everybody, especially on these Zoom meetings.
Thank you, I, I apologize if it came off as, why do you care? Because that is not at all what I intended, I wondered why this is being questioned, because it is something that has been passed by the council for ten or twenty years, and, and here's the history. The history is that Wagner Irwin Shealy has recommended in the past that this be included in the salary ordinance, in order to tie your salary ordinance and your personnel policy together. Knowing that the division of authority in county government is that the executive, county commissioners pass policies and contracts, and that the council passes the salary ordinance and pays for the salaries and appropriates money. So in order to tie the personnel policy, uh, together with the salary, and it's give it a little bit of teeth, Wagner Irwin Shealy has recommended that that language be in your salary ordinance. Has done that for quite some time, now the, the reasoning, the State Board of Accounts is, as I was sta- starting to say, the State, State Board of Accounts is aware of this, and they have said, for example, what if you've had a rogue elected official who decides, I'm not going to make my employees fill out a timesheet, or I'm not going to make my employees abide by the sick leave policy, or the F M L A policy, or some other policy? The way that you get that rogue elected official's attention to follow the rules is to have this language in your salary ordinance, and then you can say, okay, that's fine, you don't have to, but we're putting in writing that any payments that, that, um, are made after date certain uh, will be your personal responsibility, because you have failed to comply with the policies that are required of the county to keep people safe and follow these rules, and blah, blah, blah. And we've only had to do that one time in my history, um, and again, State Board of Accounts is aware of this, this is conversation we've had within the past, um, there was an elected official who, who did not want to comply with the policy, and we had that conversation and said, this is sort of what will happen if you don't, and, and that elected official reversed courses. Um, certainly, um, there have to be some mechanism for the county council and the county commissioners to get elected officials if they are going to be supplied with, um, you know, office space and, and benefits and all of those things, to follow the rules so that they're uniformly applied, we aren't sued for discrimination, um, et cetera, we have had a uniform personnel policy since two thousand and two. Um, before that, we did not have a uniform personnel policy, and so, I, I guess, the question is, you know, do you real, do you want to reverse courses and go back to the pre-two thousand two days? Is that, or is there some other issue that we need to address, rather than, than, you know, throwing this out completely?
Okay, uh, thank you, Ms. Rice. Do you want to follow up?
No, thanks. I can, I, I could make a very long statement, but I won't, uh, I just think that we have to recognize we're all duly elected, equally elected, and, uh, it appears that there's been a movement toward requiring elected officials to do this or that, or some other thing coming out of the commissioner's office, and I just think it's inappropriate, and that's what brings us about, so, too bad.
And let me say, if there is an underlying issue, as a lawyer, I always advise that you deal with a very specific issue at hand. Um, so if there is a particular issue that needs to be addressed, I'd suggest that that be addressed. One, also, let's remember that the council has the power of the purse, and so, to the extent that there is something that is coming before you that you do not like, that you do not want to approve, whether that's a contract or a purchase, you always have the authority to say, we're not funding that. Um, so again, if there's a particular issue that needs to be addressed, I, I think it's more appropriate to do that. I don't know that I would recommend taking the language out of this salary ordinance that requires compliance with the personnel policy, because I believe that's going to open up an entire, um, can of worms that you might not want to open up.
I don't have the whole part, but I thank you for your advice.
Mr. McKim?
So I think to some degree, this, um, problem can be, uh, can be resolved by just referring us back to the personnel policy itself, which is clear about the definition of, of what an employee is and how an elected official differs, and, and I think the, the personnel policy is quite clear about not attempting to put, um, oh, not attempting to apply rules that apply to employees to elected officials as well, who are by definition not employees for most, most purposes of the personnel policy. So I think that probably, uh, Counselor Hawk might not like the way that that addresses it, but I, I think it does. It does make it clear that there, that elected officials are not, um, subject to the, the vast majority of the clauses that are in the, um, personnel policy for that reason.
Okay, uh, Ms. Hawk?
Or that they would be required, or that, uh, an elected official would be required to require of their employees in their department, uh, to do one thing or the other that was not, uh, that was beyond the norm. So I, I, I just have concerns, I hadn't had concerns before this year, but then I started looking at it and thinking, But then I started looking at it and thinking, well, it's inappropriate for county commissioners to put anything in the personnel policy which we cannot do anything about and go way beyond their authority, and we can't do anything about that. And then we've already put in there in that personnel policy that everybody has to do what the commissioners say. So and I, I truly would feel the same way I've arrived at this, the same way it would not matter who the commissioners are. I don't know how we got to where we are. We shouldn't have let it get there.
Okay.
And last, we could do something like the council would have equal say in what goes in the personnel policy, like the courts does.
I can read if you like. There is some language in the personnel policy that says it's under the Personnel Policy Administration. And it says a personnel policy committee comprised of department heads, representatives in the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, Monroe County Council, Monroe Circuit Court, the Human Resources Department, and the other elected officials in Monroe County shall be convened at least biannually to review the personnel policies and make recommendations for modifications. It shall be the responsibility of the following three overseeing authorities, county commissioners, board of judges, and the Monroe County prosecutor and attorney to policies and procedures to ensure that they're administered in a consistent and impartial manner and to provide oversight and approval as required. Now, I used to be the attorney assigned to the Personnel Policy Committee, but I am no longer. That's another attorney in our office. And so I'm not familiar with when they've been meeting or the practice, but certainly the intent of the current personnel policy, unless it's been amended, and I'm not aware of it, is that there will be a committee that has council representatives on it.
Councilmember Hawk?
Okay, this last thing I'll have to say on this when she was reading that, and I agree, it says that. But there's a big difference between somebody can make a recommendation. Hey, I can recommend everybody have steak tonight. And so that's, that's not authority to change. So anyway, I've had my say. Thank you for listening.
Well, Ms. Rice, I mean, it would seem that the council is materially involved with personnel, given our, our various committees and the authority that we have. Why, why wouldn't we, or why haven't we, as the council, been included with the other three members of the decision-making body?
In the past, the theory is that the commissioners as the legislative body, meaning the executive branch, have the authority to adopt policies and code so that that fell into the authority of the county commissioners, and that the check on the county commissioners, the fiscal check, is the, the county council. So to the extent that there is something that they require, let's say, training, that they're going to make, that they want to have done, and that you don't support training, your option, the way you have a voice, is to not, is to deappropriate or not fund something. So that you do, in fact, have a voice. It's just not a direct voice in policymaking because that's an executive function or legislative function. If that's something, though, that this council would like, the, the legal department to revisit it, I certainly can confer the other three attorneys in my office and see if they have a different opinion or if something's changed.
Well, I think it's, I think it's worthwhile to to talk about and to, and to think about more, for sure. But yeah, perhaps we can, I, I don't know that this is the venue to, to have the, the discussion over that right now, but perhaps we can discuss it at a future meeting. But yeah, it's, it's an interesting, interesting question. Does anybody else have any questions or comments about that?
I can give a little history as well. Before we had the two thousand and two personnel policy, we had a lot of confusion about who, who had the authority to do what. There was differences of opinions between departments. There were different practices between departments. And it, and we felt as if we were ripe for some sort of disparate treatment or discrimination claim because we had so many different elected officials with so many different policies. And so the thinking was we needed a uniform personnel policy, and I was the attorney that was involved in getting policy put together. We had a lot of conversation at the time about whether every single elected official should, should vote on and approve that personnel policy. And we were never going to get one done if that was the case. And so we, we decided, and the elected officials at the time felt comfortable with the prosecutor as a state elected official, the board of judges, which is a separate branch of government, and the commissioners, which is the executive over the rest of the county, thought it would make sense for those to be the ones that signed off on the personnel policy. And that has been the way we've done it, and it's worked since two thousand and two.
And this is, I'm sorry, this is what WIS recommends as well, to have those three group, those three bodies? Or do they have, do they, do they make a recommendation on that?
I don't know that they made a recommendation on that. That was something parochial. It was something that we, we determined in Monroe County was workable for Monroe County. And WIS, though, had recommended, and has, I think they recommend to every county that they work on, that you have that language in your personnel policies so that you have the ability when an elected official decides they don't want to comply with policy X, Y, or Z, that you have the ability to have a little bit of teeth or, or some type of hammer to make sure that there's compliance and that you don't end up with, you know, discriminatory or disparate practices across your county.
Well, I'm, I'm getting to the point where these, these personnel issues are so important, and the decisions that we make are so important and so critical that, you know, I like to have the, to be able to consult with on the majority of these kinds of questions. It may even be worth posing the question to them, see what they think about this, whether they think that the county council should be involved to that extent with the personnel policy, or if that's something that they even would advise on. But they, I think, you know, we've demonstrated significant investment with WIS and and, and so I think it might be worthwhile to, to check and, and see if they have any, any ability to weigh in on that, too.
Absolutely. We can definitely ask them.
Okay.
Perhaps check, might perhaps check what they, I see. See what.
Yeah, I see is another good, yeah, yeah. I mean, two thousand and two, that's a long time. I mean, there are, I, I do believe that there is some, you know, over time, things do change, and we can't be afraid of change. So it's worth kind of always reevaluating when it makes sense. Okay, so where are we on this? I think that was just ordinance twenty twenty forty-six A, right?
Yes.
Are we done with that? Okay, we'll move on to the next. Let me, let me check again. Is there any public comment? I don't recall if I. I don't see any, so we'll move on to the next one.
Okay, this is the reading of the twenty twenty-one Employee Salary Ordinance. Adopting Monroe County, Indiana Salary Schedule and Compensation Policies, Ordinance twenty twenty dash forty-six B. Whereas the Indiana Legislature adopted Indiana Code thirty-six dash two dash three at SEC, which established the Monroe County Council as the governing fiscal body of Monroe County. And whereas Indiana Code thirty-six dash two dash five dash three grants the Monroe County Council the power to, one, fix the number of offices, officers, deputies, and other employees; two, describe and classify positions and services; three, adopt schedules of compensation; and four, hire or contract with persons to assist in the development of schedules and compensation, be it ordained by the Monroe County Council of Indiana, that this ordinance affixes the number and compensation of employees of the county from the period of January first, twenty twenty-one to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, including all officers, deputies, assistants, and other employees whose salary is comprised of funds payable from any county fund or budget as provided by Indiana Code thirty-six dash two dash five at SEC. This compensation is limited by the following lines and maximum levels of salary shown on the salary compensation grids. All payments made pursuant to this ordinance are contingent upon strict compliance with and adherence to the Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook. Outliers, special occupation employees, highway employees, correctional officers, sheriff, merit deputies, and probation officers covered under a contractual agreement or whose salaries are determined by a state prescribed rule, order, guideline, or mandate shall not receive compensation above the salary range authorized for their position in their corresponding compensation grids. The county auditor shall not issue pay warrants for any pay that exceeds the authorized amount specified in the salary ordinance. In-grade supervisors whose pay is grandfathered at the maximum salary level may continue to be paid accordingly. However, the pay associated with a position shall revert to the normal pay schedule when the employee whose pay was grandfathered leaves employment with Monroe County or changes positions. No additional pay raises to the maximum salary level shall be granted without specific council approval. It is the policy of the council at the time of the passage of this salary ordinance to limit the maximum salary level rates to the current number of positions only. The council does not wish to allow additional positions to be paid at the maximum rate. The compensation amounts are listed as approximate annual appropriation amounts, and the calculation of the biweekly or hourly compensation rates may result in slight variation and will not be adjusted at year end. Compensation paid on or after January first, twenty twenty-one and prior to midnight, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one shall be calculated and paid within the parameters of this salary ordinance and the Personnel Policy Handbook, regardless of when the work is performed. Monroe County Council Policy Regarding Salaries Tied to State Mandated Salaries. Annual salaries for the Monroe County Chief Public Defender and the Chief Deputy Public Defender, the Monroe County Sheriff, and the Monroe County, I'm sorry, the Monroe Circuit Court Commissioner are all tied or related to the salaries mandated by the State of Indiana for the Monroe Circuit Court Judges and the Monroe County Prosecutor. The state mandated salaries are amended annually on July first. It is the intent and direction of the Monroe County Council that any and all salaries paid by the Monroe County Council, which are tied or related to the above-mentioned salaries mandated by the State of Indiana, shall be automatically amended at the same time as the state mandated salaries. The Monroe County Council recognizes that this is an exception to the general rule for county-set salaries, which are generally modified on January first. Additional detail, including Defense Services Standards, Standard G, Supreme Court Compensation Information, Indiana Code thirty-three dash thirty-nine dash six dash five, and Indiana Code thirty-six dash two dash three dash seventeen are incorporated by reference.
Second.
Right. Thank you. Any, yes, Michelle?
There's a, there's a page three.
Yeah, there's more. There's more.
That's a very important page.
Yep. When a year has twenty-seven pay periods, employees shall receive one additional paycheck, which shall be calculated using the twenty-six pay period method. The twenty-seventh pay period will be paid at the twenty-sixth pay rate for each employee unless changes are necessitated to comply with the compensation policy, including but not limited to overtime pay. The last twenty-seventh pay cycle year was twenty twenty. Further descriptions, definitions, and/or explanation of Monroe County Government Salary Schedule and Compensation Policies are included in this ordinance for the purpose of clarification and transparency. C-section ordinance notes, presented to the county council of Monroe County, Indiana by induction in full for the first time this nineteenth day of October twenty twenty.
Okay, are we good there?
I think so.
Okay. Any questions? Any comments? On the first reading? Okay, seeing none. Is there any public comment? Okay. No public comment either. So we will revisit this tomorrow evening as well. And that will conclude the first reading of our two thousand and twenty-one salary ordinance. And now we will have a period for council comments. Are there any council members who'd like to provide comment prior to our adjournment? All right, easy enough. No takers. Okay, well, we will see everybody tomorrow evening, five thirty P M. here on Zoom for the, for the adoption meeting. And we'll see you all then, okay? We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, I think, do we adjourn or do we continue?
Or do we, do we continue? Yep. Okay, so we are, we are not adjourned. We're continued to tomorrow evening, five thirty P M. Tomorrow evening is October twentieth, two thousand and twenty, five thirty P M. here on Zoom. All right, see you all then.